All right, good evening, everyone. We're gonna call to order the August 19th, 2013 city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. One moment, please. All right, we'll take us down to the consent docket, and we do need to remove item C from the consent docket. Does anybody wish to remove any other items off the consent docket? Not, is there a motion on the consent docket except for item C?
I would move approval except for item C on the consent docket.
Wait a second, yeah, it is C, I apologize, C, yes. And we have a motion, a second, to approve consent docket, less item C. And that motion passes four to zero, and we'll, let's note that Counselor Scott is not present this evening. Okay, that takes us down to public comment, not scheduled for public hearing, and we do have two requests. First is from Dennis Gronquist.
My name is Dennis Gronquist. I live at 3219 East Peachtree Avenue, Stillwater. I take exception to the statement, to one of the statements made in Resolution 2013-13, quote, "Whereas Oklahoma is the only state in the nation where cities and towns are solely dependent upon sales tax to fund all the basic services, police, fire, roads, parks, libraries, roads, maintenance, and more." That statement is blatantly false, although it is true that it is the intent of the state law. The states do not enforce that law, nor do you. According to my figures, 31.4 percent of the typical Stillwater utility payment today is taxation, as it is above and beyond the cost of the service. That money was not voted on by the citizens, but it is returned to the city as excess funds for general use. Yes, the voters of Oklahoma are supposed to vote on funds provided to support the city. True public services are not there to generate a profit at the expense of the public. But the political deception of our city gets, gets more money out of the utility trust to fund what it wants than it does from the voter authorized funds. It's not hard to understand, this administration is not serving the public, it is serving the bigger government empire at the public's expense.
And our second request is from Pat James.
My name is Pat James, I live at 104 East Eskridge in Stillwater, and I'm speaking about Resolution Number 2013-15, which is the resolution to hold the election on November 12th, and I'm speaking in favor of that resolution. This day is election day, and people all over the country will be voting on various offices and issues that day. I'm also asking the council to prepare Stillwater to citizens to vote intelligently on these resolutions. September 24th is the National Voter Registration Day. The Stillwater League of Women Voters will be setting up stations where citizens can register, change addresses, get information on voter ID, absentee ballots, where to vote, and where to get information on these resolutions. I hope I've been more timely in my requests this time to prepare you to have information for citizens of Stillwater. By the way, I've asked permission to have one of these information centers here in the rotunda of the City Hall, and I'm glad to report that we have been given permission to set one up there. We'll have some set up at stores and so forth throughout the city on September 24th. I hope that you will get some papers together for us to have on the tables that day about the resolutions, so that people, when they ask questions about voting, can have the information about the resolutions, and we'll also have, we welcome both pros and cons on, on that day. So, that is my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a footnote, we will certainly welcome one of their registration booths at City Hall, for public purpose, and we hope people do register, not only this election, but for all in general.
Yes. Okay. That'll take us down to, I don't know if this is an item removed from consent docket or a public hearing, but we're gonna treat it like a public hearing. So, Mr. Dorman, this is when we pulled off consent docket. Did we have good notice?
Yes, we noticed this sufficient under state statute, both public, it was published and was also mailed to all of the adjoining property owners.
Okay, so even though it's on consent docket, we're still good for public hearing?
Yes, sir, it was just simply on the wrong place on the agenda, that's the only issue that, that's why it was appropriate to move it and go forward.
Okay, so, good notice?
Yes, sir, it is.
Wonderful. Ms. Evans?
Good evening, Patty Evans, Development Services. This closing or is for property at 711 West Peaceable Acres Road. This is the property that is going to be developed for the ranch. There are three utility easements on the property that they're requesting to be closed. The first one, looks like the road that goes into the property, actually, the road is private, so it doesn't need to be closed or anything, but it is overlaid with a public utility easement, so that's the easement that needs to be closed. And then we have two utility easements that run north and south, right here, that are also requesting to be closed. Our findings show that the easements must be closed for the development of the property as a retirement community, and any needed easements will be dedicated at the time of development. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Since it wasn't set up for public hearing, I know the applicants in the room, does the applicant wish to speak? Okay. And I guess, does anyone wish to speak against this application? Okay, so we'll, I guess, open, we had no requests, and then close the public hearing. So, recommendation?
Staff recommends that the council approve the request to close the subject utility easements within property addressed as 711 West Peaceable Acres Road.
Questions of staff?
Was this heard by the planning commission?
I'm sorry?
Was this heard by the planning commission?
No, closings do not go to the planning commission.
I would still move approval. I wondered why you were sticking your neck out.
All right, we have, we have a motion and a second to approve recommendation. And that is approved four to zero. All right, that'll take us down to general orders, design and construction standards. Is that, follow, or that? Mr. Neal?
Good evening, Brandon Neal, Water Utility Engineer, too. You have before you tonight two sets of minor revisions to the standards. The first one is some, the first one includes some minor corrections to the transportation details. All of those corrections simply bring the details in line, so that they say the same thing that the specs do, as a minor oversight when they were first developed, just tidying things up. The other one is the change from, for lid materials in the specs, so that the required lid materials are compatible with our new AMR system. I brought a little show and tell, you're welcome to have a look.
We needed visual aids. Like, we couldn't understand the homework.
Play a little frisbee with them if you'd like. This is our old standard, it's a cast iron lid, it is not friendly to the radio frequencies that are put out by our AMR units. This is the new plastic lid, it is almost transparent to the radio frequencies, and that is the change that we propose. In the odd scenario where we need something more durable than a plastic lid, such as in a driveway, the standards do include the flexibility to make a more stringent requirement for something a little bit tougher, a more specialized product, but as a standard, it's not needed at this time.
And I can attest to how strong those are, as my lawnmowers hit the one in my front yard, and it has survived. The lawnmower didn't.
I was gonna say, the lid or the lawnmower?
The lid did survive, so.
Don't follow tort cleaning.
Oh, no, 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 that was, that was, that was all my doing, so.
Can I interest you in a lid?
So, all right, any other questions for Mr. Neal? Okay, I do have one. Were these revisions, with the Builder Relations Committee, they saw the revisions, and with that impact, what were their, did they have comments on these revisions?
They did not, this was not sent to the Builders Relations Committee in the interest of getting it corrected very quickly. I think I noted in your packet that the cost impact of changing these lids is very small, it's, yeah, seven dollars, I think, per lid additional, which of course adds up when you're putting in a lot of them, but suffice to say, it's what's necessary to implement the AMR system. And I will add that we do, every time we do a meter set, we bear that cost on our own, so we certainly aren't asking anybody to write a check that we haven't already ourselves many times over.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion on these proposed revisions?
I move approval.
Motion, second, to approve these revisions. And that also passes four to zero. That'll take us down to resolutions, and...
I think you just approved the first one.
Did I? I sure did, okay. Do we need to actually adopt a resolution?
They need to vote on that again.
Will it make you happy?
It'd probably make me happy.
Okay.
Makes me greedy.
Okay, I'm gonna make your, you're on for resolutions tonight, how's that?
I'm reading them.
Hey, Resolution Number A on here.
A resolution of the Stillwater City Council adopting revisions to the Stillwater Design and Construction Standards.
Any questions?
I'll take the other one off, and I move, I amend my motion to include Resolution Number 2013 to be approved.
We've already voted, so.
Yeah, it's already voted.
Just a new motion.
Do you have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Yes, that's, that's what I said.
Okay, motion to adopt the resolution, and a second. Resolution is adopted four to zero, next resolution?
A resolution of support for HR 684 regarding marketplace fairness.
Okay, any questions on this resolution?
Do you want a brief report, for those who don't know what it is?
Sure.
The Oklahoma Municipal League Board of Directors recently passed this resolution and another one, and recommending that cities do the same, for those who don't know. Bill being, that's referenced here, it's been considered in Congress. It's been a long, long-term effort to try to create fairness in the marketplace, because our local vendors, when someone goes on the internet to buy something, they can avoid the local sales tax. And so, it's considered to be an unfair competition, and with passage of this, if you buy something on the internet, you'd pay the same sales taxes if you bought it at your neighborhood store. So it creates a fairness of your local vendors, but it also maintains the, the tax revenues, the local tax revenues as well. So, I strongly recommend council's approval of this, and if it's approved, this will be placed with a package of other resolutions from other cities and sent to our congressional delegation in Washington, as well as authors of the bill.
Any questions? Is there a motion on this resolution?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2013-14.
That's 13.
13, sorry.
Second.
Motion, a second, on Resolution 2013-13. That resolution is adopted four to zero, takes us down to the next resolution. Mr. Dorman?
A resolution conveying to the United States Congress and President of the United States a municipal position on the preservation of tax-exempt municipal financing.
This is also supported by the Municipal League Board, approved unanimously, and as, you know, we're all probably aware, Washington's trying to continually balance its budget, one of the things that's being proposed by some of the more tax-oriented members in Washington is to remove the tax exemption on municipal bonds, which means that if an investment firm or, or banks were to loan money to a city, today, it's, that revenue that they earn is tax exempt, which translates to a lower interest rates for cities to borrow money. If that tax exemption goes away, those interest rates will rise, and there will be no advantage to issuing loans to cities. And so, we think that's, it's been in place for many, many years. It's an advantage to local municipalities, we're taxing entity to exempt another taxing entity. So, personally, I think we should oppose the removal of that tax exemption on behalf of municipalities, and I would recommend the council approve this resolution, and it also will be sent along.
Any questions on this resolution? Motion?
I move, we approve Resolution 2013-14.
Second.
Motion, and a second. And that resolution is adopted four to zero. Next resolution?
Would be Resolution Number 2013-15. This is the resolution that will call the election on the parks and recreation and public safety components of the Our Stillwater Initiative. And you have in front of you the final version of that resolution, and I also, just for members of the press or interested parties, I have some additional copies up here that you can pick up after the meeting if you'd like them, but this is the item that will call the election on November 12th. And so, if you'll give me a second, I will read this rather lengthy title, which unfortunately I did have to write. A resolution authorizing calling and holding an election in the city of Stillwater, state of Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said city the questions of, one, the issuance of general obligation bonds by said city in an amount not to exceed the sum of $20 million, for the purpose of constructing and equipping a baseball, softball, soccer facility in the vicinity of Sanger and Richmond Roads, the construction and equipping of an outdoor amphitheater, boardwalk, and lakefront development sites at Boomer Lake Park, all to be owned exclusively by said city and levy and collect upon an annual tax in addition to all other taxes upon all taxable property in said city for the payment of principal and interest on said bonds. And two, the issuance of general obligation bonds by said city in the amount not to exceed the sum of $7,500,000 for the purpose of constructing and equipping a new fire station in the vicinity of Western Road and Hall of Fame Avenue, purchase of a new fire engine, purchase of new police vehicles, purchase of video equipment for said vehicles, and purchase of upgrades and enhancements to the public safety communication system, all to be owned exclusively by said city, and levy and collect an annual tax in addition to all other taxes upon all taxable property in said city for the payment of principal and interest on said bonds.
Okay, any, any questions on Resolution 2013-15?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second, on 2013-15. Resolution is adopted four to zero, takes us to Resolution 2013-16.
Resolution 2013-16 is a, the sales tax authorization for the transportation component of the Our Stillwater Initiative. And basically, for the council's information, this is essentially the same language that is in the half-cent sales tax ordinance that we have right now. There are four differences. One, the, the percentage is raised from one half percent to one percent, there is no expiration date, there are, there's no listing of specific projects, as was in the first half penny sales tax and in the reauthorization, and finally, it does provide for payment of the obligation of the bonds that you did take out under the 2006 authorization, so that does remain in there, but otherwise, it is the same ordinance. Any questions on that? If not, I will start reading.
Read away.
A resolution imposing, adopting, proposing adoption of ordinance number 3237, amending the Stillwater Municipal Code by repealing Chapter 39, Taxation, Article 3, Sales and Use Tax, Division 6, Transportation Sales Tax, Sections 39 to 238 to 39-246, to create the 2013 Transportation Sales Tax Ordinance, levying a sales tax of one percent, providing an effective date, designating projects on which revenues can be expended, providing for definitions, exemptions, and administrative procedures, and providing for payment of obligations incurred under Ordinance Number 2923, 2006 Transportation Sales Tax.
All right, questions?
I move the approval of Resolution CC 2013-16.
Second.
Motion, and a second, on the Resolution 2013-16. And that passes four to zero. Okay, and that takes us down to ordinances, and we have ordinance 3237.
And this is the ordinance that you just authorized the election on, and you still have to read it two times. You'll read it tonight, and then you will read it again at your next regular city council meeting, and then at that point, it's published, and then the citizens will vote on this on November 12th.
Okay, so just make sure everyone's on the same page. These steps simply are putting it in front of the voters to vote on?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, ordinance 3237.
Move approval.
I'd read it for...
I'd be happy not to read it, but unfortunately, I have to.
He already read it once, under the resolution.
We read the resolution, it's actually a little bit different.
Oh, okay.
Not much. An ordinance amending the Stillwater Municipal Code by repealing Chapter 39, Taxation, Article 3, Sales and Use Tax, Division 6, Transportation Sales Tax, Sections 39-238 to 39-246, to create the 2013 Transportation Sales Tax Ordinance, levying a sales tax of one percent, providing an effective date, designating projects on which revenues can be expended, providing for definitions, exemptions, and administrative procedures, and providing for payment of obligations incurred under Ordinance 2923, 2006 Transportation Sales Tax.
I'm not for it now. Move approval.
Motion, and a second, on ordinance 3237, first reading. And that passes four to zero. And on second reading, we have ordinance 3236.
An ordinance amending Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 6, Land Use Classifications, Division 5, Industrial Districts, amending Section 23-160, IL Light Industrial District.
Any questions on this ordinance? Is there a motion on this ordinance?
I move approval of 3236. Second.
Motion, a second, 3236, on second reading. That passes four to zero. That takes us down to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Enough airtime?
I think I've probably said enough.
Okay. Mr. Galloway?
Well, just a couple things. I do wanna say, Ms. James was up there earlier, talking about a sheet of information, and that a lot of people worked on the Our Stillwater components that are being put out there, and a lot of people internally working on this, public safety and others, and we have not put out all the information at this point. It would have been premature to put out the information if the council hadn't officially called an election, I mean technically. Now that the, the council's officially voted to call that election, we, we do have information sheets and pockets of information, we will be holding a lot of public meetings, we'll be publishing information on the web, all sorts of places. We want, as was said earlier, we need to make sure every voter is, is as well educated about these as they possibly can be or want to be, so they can make an, you know, intelligent decision. So, we will be having a lot of information out very, very soon. And I also wanted to clarify the, I think a lot of people understand it, but as you read the, the resolution and the ordinance on the sales tax for transportation, it talks about the approval of the one cent, but you have to listen carefully to the first part, it repeals the existing half cent.
Right.
So the net effect is just asking for an additional one-half cent over, and so it's one percent replacing a half cent. Just wanna make sure people don't get confused and think we're asking for a whole percent. That's all I have.
Anything from the council?
Nothing this evening.
Anything for upcoming meetings? We don't have any appointments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second, to adjourn the city council meeting. And that passes five to zero, city council is adjourned, and we will call to order the August 19th, 2013 Stillwater Utility Authorities Meeting. And we have a consent docket with three items on it. Anyone wish to remove anything from the consent docket of Stillwater Utility Authority? Not, is there a motion on this consent docket?
I move to approve the consent docket.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the consent docket. That is approved four to zero. That takes us down to general orders.
Good evening, Chairman and trustees, Dan Blankenship, SUA Director, here this evening to ask you to take the next step towards the development of a proposed electric power generation station. When we were preparing for the negotiations with GRDA, we knew that there was gonna be a component in there of power generation, because we currently operate a generation station, and so, we, we did a power generation feasibility analysis. And the feasibility analysis actually looked at three different alternatives. The first alternative was to continue to operate the existing resources that we have. The second alternative was to get out of the generation business, to basically have no generation, and the third alternative was to look at the possibility of building new generation resources. The reason that we looked at the alternative for building new generation resources is because our existing plant, Boomer, also known as Boomer Lake Station, consists of two steam units that are vintage 1950, are in the 1950s, and they've been overhauled once and are getting very close to be, to need to be overhauled again, and so, we felt that it would be appropriate to take a look at what, what new generation would do for us. The results of the analysis was that, that it was favorable to look at new generation, but it was contingent upon the terms that we might negotiate as part of a purchase-power and sale agreement with GRDA. As you know, you all approved that agreement a couple weeks ago, it was also then approved by the GRDA Board last week, and so it will become effective on September 1st of this year. The, the agreement that we entered into allows us the flexibility to do any one of those three alternatives. If we, if we were to choose to retain and, and try to operate, or continue to operate our existing resources, the GRDA would pay to us on an annual basis approximately $1.2 million, known as a capacity payment, and that's simply a payment to us that is equivalent to the value to GRDA of having that generation asset here and operational. If we're able to maintain it operational, we'd get a full capacity payment, if not, it would be reduced. In addition to the capacity payment, they would also pay us for any energy that we would generate. I can tell you, though, that because of the age of the, the unit, it's... I can tell you, though, that because of the age of the, the unit, it's, or the units, they are very low on the efficiency rating, and so they're, they're not called upon very frequently. In fact, we had the two hottest summers on record the past two years, and we were called to operate those, those units one time, and that was in a time that GRDA had one of their large units go down unexpectedly. If we were to choose this option, probably within the next five years, we'd be looking at an additional refurbishment, and that's probably going to cost in the neighborhood of about $14 million. And that would be in addition to any other capital expenses that we would have to keep those units operational. So when you look at the capacity payment compared to what the capital cost of maintaining the units are, we really start to get into a negative cash flow, cash flow position. So in order to maintain and, and do this, do these improvements, we would be looking at an increase in the rate in order to, to do that. The next option or alternative was no generation. We would simply just purchase electricity from GRDA, and we would not have any generation resources here, and there's no capacity payment associated with that, so it's revenue neutral. The third alternative that is provided for in the agreement is the construction of approximately 56 megawatts of new generation. The, the plant that we have looked at as a distinct, you know, is probably the, the most highest possibility or probability of, of building here is one that is a very high efficiency unit. It creates a lot of value for GRDA, and therefore it's also about twice the generating capacity as the two units in Boomer Lake Station right now. So that would generate a much larger value for GRDA, and in fact, it's estimated to be approximately $4.5 million annual payment, plus we would receive an energy payment for each kilowatt hour that we generated. The energy payment is set up so that we would recover all of our operational expenses associated with generating that. So the evaluation comes in, when you're looking at the new generation is, is, you know, are the capital costs less than the capacity payment? There are, there's two factors that that's really dependent upon, and that's the, the interest rates, because we would have to do long-term financing, bonding for this, and the actual capital cost of the, of the construction. We do have some control over the capital cost, because we're going to specify to the extent what, what's going to be included in the plant, the interest rates, we do not have any control over. At this time, the interest rates, the market interest rates, and the projected cost of the, of the plant, we, then our, our debt, our capital cost, our annual capital cost, would be less than what GRDA would pay us on an annual basis just to have the asset here. So at this time, all indications are that it would be favorable from a financial standpoint. And so that's, when you, when you look at the benefits of doing new generation, there's two primary benefits, and that's financial benefits and then reliability benefits. On the financial side, it's the only alternative that provides a cash flow, or a positive cash flow. The excess revenues that are generated, the positive cash flow, can be used to offset future purchase power costs and potentially defer future rate increases. The, twice, twice the capacity, as I mentioned, is our existing units. If we were to have to start our existing units now, it's about an eight to 10-hour process. The units that we've identified can be up to full speed in five minutes. That's a benefit, a huge benefit to GRDA. It's also a benefit to us in the sense that if we had a problem on the transmission system and we had to start up to run these units to provide power to ourselves, we could do that right now. It would take us eight to 10 hours, and we could only generate about 27 megawatts. Under this scenario, we would start them up within five minutes and be able to generate 56 megawatts, which would cover our entire load during the winter periods, part of the fall, and, and part of the spring. When we get into the summertime, our load gets up to about 130 megawatts, or at least it did the past couple of years. I don't think we're going to get close to that this year unless something changes weather-wise in the next few weeks. But for the most part, you know, if we did have a problem with the grid, we could, we could operate on what's called island mode, and we would generate and use all of the electricity that, that we were generating, so that we could, in the lower portions of the years, meet all the demand. If it were in the summertime, we would probably have to identify certain critical circuits that we would power all the time and then roll through the, the other circuits, but we would have, we would have power to distribute. So as far as increased reliability, having the, the asset here in Stillwater provides a definite positive value. We haven't calculated or tried to calculate what that value might be, but haven't really felt that there was the need to, because we still felt like we're on the positive side on the, on the financial. The, the first step in this process, really the first formal step in this process, was the approval of the GRDA contract, what occurred. The next step is what I'm asking you to take tonight, and that is approval or authorization for the city manager to enter into a professional engineering services contract. That, that would be a firm commitment to move forward with the engineering that is necessary to, to complete the design of the project and, and identify, get it basically ready to, to go to construction. The next thing I'm going to, we're also going to ask you to continue with the land acquisition process. We have been working with the commissioners of the land office. They are the branch of the state government that are entrusted with school and property that was set aside at statehood. They, they are willing, and we have initiated the process with them, to exchange properties, twelve, about 12, little, 12 and a quarter acres on Perkins Road between, on the west side of Perkins Road, between Airport and Richmond. That's our property for 25 acres of their property at the northwest corner of Jardoe and Airport. There's an existing substation there. We've got existing transmission lines there that are part of our 69 KV system, and so that is by far the, the best location for us, and, and they've been more than cooperative. It's just a matter of getting through that process. Not asking you to approve the exchange tonight, because we have to get through their process, and we would come back to the city council and, and get formal approval of that either, probably sometime in October, they meet, the commissioners of the land office meet once a month. We don't think that we'll be quite ready for September, but we, we anticipate October. The third thing that we're going to ask you, or I'm asking you and recommending tonight, is that you give us authorization to proceed with preparation of a financing package. That's the one variable, like I said, that we do not control and could have significant implications on how far we go or don't go with this project. It's about being aggressive. It's about a 60-day period to put together a bond issuance and then bring that back to the trustees for your consideration. The reason that we are being so aggressive in moving forward as rapidly as we possibly can is because the current bond market is, has been escalating, and we anticipate it will continue to escalate. And, and obviously, as the interest rate goes up, then the affordability of their project goes down, so we feel that that's very important. So tonight, there is no formal commitment to build the, the plant. The, the formal commitment to build the plant comes when we actually have a bond package that we can come back and we can tell you exactly what the interest rate is, and then we can then proceed with contracting for the purchase of the engines and then ultimately for the construction of, of the plant. That is my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then make a formal recommendation when you're ready.
Questions?
Mr. Coven, appreciate your analysis. I know what's, you were actually speaking to way more than the items on the agenda. Since you did, just from my point of view, scaling up a plant, a power plant, if it requires a rate increase in order to achieve it, isn't a favorable outcome in my view. If we can control our costs and manage the interest rate so that net-net, not our customers win as well as the city, then I'm for it. But I, I don't think I would be as interested in a proposal where the city's gaining additional revenue from GRDA, but the only way they're able to achieve that is increasing the rate.
Right, and that's, that is our goal.
That's, I'll be very interested in seeing that analysis.
Yeah, until, until we have that interest rate, we can't answer that question for sure, but, but at this point in time, we, net positive is, is, has been our objective from, from day one. Like I say, there are some, there are some value to having that here, so even if it comes back at a, I guess, a, without, without a negative cash, even if it's a, a break-even deal, there is some benefit here, but our objective from day one is to make it a net positive, and that's what we'll continue to strive for.
You said that during the summer, you're talking about the 56 megawatt, bad word to use, ability to produce 56 megawatts. That's the, and I know people a lot smarter than me do that analysis, came up with 56 Why did they come up with that number? And the question I'm, where this coming from, you said during our summer months, you said 130 megawatts. I was assuming you meant that was our peak usage.
Yes, yes.
Not our average usage.
No, that's our, that's our peak.
Okay. Why 56?
56 was, we looked at the affordability factor, and once we start getting much above the mid-50s, it, it really didn't pencil out. And so when we started looking at the different units that were available and the engines, and when you start to put these things together, 56 was actually the technology that we're looking at was, it's a combination of, of three units that are approximately 18.8 megawatts apiece, I believe. And so that's how we got, excuse me, that's how we got to 56. But it was, it was in the, the mid-50s was the target based on the feasibility study.
So to get more generation would have been too expensive for it to pay for itself?
Right. Well, it would have, it probably would have got to the point where we would not be able to, to finance it, and also the, the benefit to GRDA, because we would have gotten maybe too far above what our minimum is during the, the wintertime.
Okay.
So it was kind of a balancing act that we, that we tried to follow in, in the feasibility study, to make it so that it was close enough so that we didn't have a lot of excess capacity in the, in the wintertime, realizing that we, we were not going to get close to the, the peak capacity in the summertime.
Additional question? I'm assuming, but I shouldn't assume, the $4.5 million expenditure won't require a rate increase either?
That's, that's correct. They, if we can, our, our objective is to keep the capital cost or the debt retirement cost less than $4.5 million, because that, that's basically the guaranteed payment from, from GRDA.
Any other questions from the trustees? Okay, so right now, what you're asking from us, those three, three steps, even when added all up, is not a commitment to build the plant, it's a commitment to take the next step in determining more facts, so we can make that determination.
Yeah, the, yeah, this step is not making a commitment to, to build the plant. This step is giving us the ability to get to the point where we can come back and tell you if it is truly financially feasible to make that firm commitment. So we're recommending that, or I'm recommending that the trustees authorize the general manager enter into a professional services agreement with Burns &amp; McDonnell for power generation station engineering, design, and bidding services, and authorize expenditures up to $4.5 million for the services. Second, complete, authorize the general manager to complete the land swap acquisition process with the state commissioners of the land office for the acquisition of approximately 25 acres located at the northwest corner of Jardoe and Airport Road in exchange for approximately 12.25 acres on North Perkins Road located on the west side of Perkins Road, approximately midway between Airport and Richmond Road, which will be subject to future consideration by the city council. And number three, the general manager to work with JP Morgan as the bond underwriter, prepare a bond offering, which will be subject to future consideration by the trustees.
There's your recommendation.
Do you take one motion?
One motion.
I would move approval.
Motion in a second. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Our recommendation is approved, four to zero.
Thank you very much. We anticipate being back in front of you in approximately 60 days with more information.
Thank you.
Take up the other item, may?
Yeah, we'll go to the second item, may? Water Utilities, the Ara Completion Summary. Mr. Daniels.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, and staff. I'm here to do a wrap-up presentation, a brief report on the completion of the 18 Ara projects, which were started in the fall of 2009. I've got a little brief video here, and after that, I'll answer any questions.
Back in 2009, the Stillwater Utilities Authority applied for funding from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act to fund water and wastewater improvement projects. The city's Ara program originally included 15 projects, and due to low bid prices, the original projects were completed at a lower cost than originally estimated, and added three additional projects. The following lists all the construction projects from the city's Ara program. The installation of the automated meter reading system was the largest project in this program. The installation was performed by city staff. The total cost of the 18 projects was $13,656,388.25. The total Ara loan amount was $13,410,286.25. From the loan figure, $2,578,999.81 was forgiven from the loan amount. The SUA contributed $246,102 to make up the differences for the total cost. The following lists all Ara-funded equipment purchases. These Ara-funded projects and equipment purchases were done to improve the city's water and wastewater infrastructure, which will benefit all residents in the city of Stillwater.
That concludes the video. I'm prepared to answer any questions, Mayor.
Questions? I appreciate your, having some of the, your guys out with the equipment out front, though. I mean, seeing it on paper and even seeing the pictures doesn't quite do it justice when you can see them personally out front, so I appreciate you setting that up.
I think it took them two days to shine it up.
They were a little cleaner than I was expecting, I have to admit.
Well, before I conclude, can I have your approval to recognize the city staff who made this project a success, 18 projects?
Please do.
Don't raise up, please, city staff who involved in the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one comment, Mr.. When I first came home, we had our, one of our city council meetings out at the plant southeast of town, which was very educational. That was my first meeting up with Anthony Daniels. He's done a great job since then on this ad.
Council, our trustee Hopkins, that's a great lead-in, if I may. You know, this, as I indicated in the video, this started in the fall of 2009, and we concluded in the summer of 2013, a little less than four years. And this was a federally, you know, funded project, and there's a lot of hoops you got to jump through. And Anthony Daniel played a really, really key role in that. We had some short deadlines. He put a lot of extra effort in meeting those deadlines and getting the information to DEQ and the Oklahoma Water Resources Board to ensure that we were able to get all of the money that we had and that we did receive. And as the video indicated, we're about 2.5, I think it was $2.5 million or so of grant money that we do not have to repay, so his, his efforts were very monumental in, in getting that done. As the video also indicated, our, our biggest project was the meter AMR, the Automated Meter Reading. And as part of that, we changed out every meter in the city of Stillwater. One of the meters that we changed out- One of the meters that we changed out, as I may, Mr. John Newburn, our distribution superintendent, our supervisor, took the opportunity to, to put this plaque together for Mr. Daniel. This, this water meter that I, that I hold here was actually installed in nineteen-ten.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, so that's, that makes it about a hundred-and-three years, if my math is correct. Anybody that knows anything about water meters knows that after about ten or twelve years, they start to slow down and not quite measure all of the water that goes through them. I can't hardly imagine how much this one had slowed down over the hundred-year life of it. But with that, I would like to present this, I'd like to thank Mr. Newburn and his staff for everything they have done and, and for putting this together for Mr. Daniel and appreciation for the hard work on the AMR project. Anthony, thank you very much. Thank you for listening.
That is wonderful.
Good doorstep. Now, if I see him on Antique Roadshow.
How many more nineteen-ten water meters? They're all gone, aren't they?
I don't know how many we have left.
None, none, out in the field.
No, not in the field. We may have some scrap ones out.
Oh, I just want to make sure none were being used for their stated purpose. That's great, okay. Well, thank you. Congratulations to the, the entire water department there, all those different projects. That is very beneficial to all the citizens, so thank you guys very much. And once again, I, I appreciate you having some of the equipment out there, and maybe more importantly, thank you for cleaning it. So, good stuff. That is all we have on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second to adjourn Stillwater Utility Authority. Passes four to zero, and we are-